Yes.
All right.
You changed your voice.
Some sort of update to Zoom.
You sound more automated. All right, well now call the city council regular meeting to order for May 24th, 6:00 PM. Please rise to invocation and pledge allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this night, Lord. We just thank for how long it has been here. We just ask you to send your Holy Spirit, Father, to lead us and guide us tonight, Lord. Bless us with your wisdom, Father, we make the right decisions, Lord, in your eyes, Father. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and representative of justice.
Please see. Please get a roll call.
Councilmember Gray?
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard? Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Do you have a form?
All right, item number four, we have the July fireworks. Mr. Travis Turner, I see he is with us. We do have his proposal in our packet. Do we have any questions for Mr. Turner?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Mr. Travis Turner's report with the bar, we've asked twice.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Looking forward to it, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number five, we have the Avon Park Historical Society, Ms. Nancy Fisk, couple requests. Nancy, if you'll please approach. For the record, she is with the Avon Park Historical Society, Ms. Nancy Fisk.
That's correct.
Looks like you're requesting a couple of trash receptacles. Could you tell us about the, why you need them?
We are, well, first of all, thank you for putting me on the agenda and good evening, everyone. I am here representing the historical society. We have two benches in front of the depot museum. We have one trash receptacle that's near one. We have a problem with vagrants and homeless people using our property for to take showers, to plug in their phones, to eat all kinds of food from cans and styrofoam containers. Some of it ends up on the ground. I'm thinking that if we have a receptacle at each, at the end of each bench, perhaps people will be more inclined to use it instead of walking all the way, you know, like 10 steps to the other one. We do have three benches in all and we'd like to have a trash receptacle by each one. And I'd like them to match. And the city placed the one that's there.
Is it one of the black ones with the slats on it?
Yes. And I don't know if there are any more like that available, but I think it would look much nicer if they put on that.
Don't have to go from some other part of town and just put them over there, right?
We'll get them.
Okay, thank you. And the other item is...
Excuse me? Before you move on, you said the homeless people are taking showers there? How do they do that?
Well, we have two outside spigots.
Oh, okay.
To use for our garden.
I got it.
And then one, an enterprising person has put down a piece of plywood on the backside of the train car. So, and they've taken, removed the trigger thing from the hose so that they can have the water running continuously and not have to hold it. And they have hooked it up somehow. There's a towel hanging over the railing right now. I saw as they came by, but I didn't stop, I'm gonna go back and...
I was gonna say, we're gonna try to remedy that.
No.
Because we have a...
If I can add quick on that, Major Hood's taking, already taking notes, he give you a thumbs up. So Sheriff's Office would be looking at that.
Well, I filed a complaint as well, so I hope so.
Well, he'll make sure it's done, he's the boss.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item. We are requesting the use of the corner office at the community center. It's been vacant for three or four years. And we would like to use it to store bound copies of newspapers and other archival items that are taking up a lot of space in the museum. The large build, the large room at the end of the museum that opens out on the dining car end is full of those newspapers and other things that are used occasionally for research. So we don't really want to put them in a storage unit that's far away because it would be inconvenient for people who do want to do research. But if we could get those out of there, we would have more space for exhibits. And it would make the museum more interesting for visitors. We have some exhibits that need to be expanded. One example would be the baseball. We have some baseball heroes from Avon Park here that we only have a picture of Tom Gordon, for example. And he's made, he has all kinds of records in the American League. And we don't have much of a story on him, we have a picture. And his boys play major league ball. We'd like to be able to expand that exhibit, especially for people that are Avon Park heroes.
Are you saying the exhibit inside the museum or expanded in the community center?
No, no, no.
Just storage for the community center?
The storage would be the community center. It would not be open to the public, except by appointments. If there were people who wanted to do research and we thought that they could find information there, then it would be by appointment. It would not be open at the same hours that the museum or, you know, like a regular thing to be open to the public. It would just be for storage.
I'll probably take more on the west end of the community center.
There's a room off to the side there, exactly the northwest side, right?
It's where the memorial is, the dog memorial, it's on that side.
Yeah.
And we have to open it for you or will you have a key, are you asking for the key there?
I know that it would require further discussion. I'd just like you all to consider it. It does have to be climate controlled. And so I'm sure the air conditioning is not on the whole time.
This is a small storage room.
There are two rooms there.
It's right next to the bathroom?
Yes, there is a restroom.
It used to be the office for the CRA guy 20 years ago.
But there are two rooms. And it would be enough space to house those newspaper things and a few other things that we have that are archival that we don't use all the time.
And if it ever is, if it is considered, then the only access would be during working hours because the city staff will have to let you in.
Right.
Right? Because there's a, we call it, an alarm on the building and there's a key. And, you know, not everybody gets a key.
Right.
So it would have to be by appointment with city staff to open it up.
Well, there is a back, there's a door on that side, an entrance to it. And I don't know what the museum upstairs does, whether someone from the city has to come and open for them.
They use the elevator, they have the side steps.
Right, okay, well, that, there's a small lobby just inside and which I don't think, I mean, it could be secured so that anyone coming into that little area wouldn't have to go into the main building. But I don't know. I would just like to open the discussion. And also, as far as the air conditioning is concerned, I've been led to believe that there is a small unit that could go, that would pick in when the regular air conditioning is off. It would require putting a piece of machinery on the outside of the building, which would not be, would not detract from the appearance of the building. A lot of places have those. And it would just be for those two rooms. And so we would, we've already discussed it with the board and we would be willing to negotiate for the expense of that if we're allowed to use the space. So I know further discussion is going to be needed, but I'd like you to just consider it.
Sure. Well, I'd like for the staff to take a look at that room and see if it's ever been used, ever going to be used and put all the details around it and then take it up at a future meeting would be ideal.
Okay.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
We'll try to take it up at our next meeting or the meeting there.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The other requests, there's no issue with getting that done, right Mark?
Nancy, I just have a question. Do you know how that lobby is there at the front that faces Main Street?
Yes.
Okay, is it this room and that room or is it over here?
This is Main Street.
Yes, this one. Okay, there's two rooms.
It seems to be...
If you could come back to the microphone.
I'm sorry, I just wonder, I'm trying to orient myself. When you say there's a door access there, the door is from the Main Street side?
Yes.
Right, it's not a door on the outside of the building because it was a bank?
Yeah.
So it's from the outside, front door, front glass doors?
Correct. And it looks like, that when I was in there a couple of years ago, it looks like there's storage in that other room that it opens out into the main room. And I think that that's where some tables and chairs and things are stored. And so that, that door was locked when we looked at the room a few years ago. Someone showed me. Thank you.
Very good. Item number six, we have the Avon Park Chamber of Commerce event request for the Christmas parade. Mr. George Carros. If you could please come to the microphone. For the record, this is George Carros with Avon Park Chamber of Commerce. It looks like the Christmas parade is on its way back, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a event request before us that looks similar to previous years. Does that sum it up?
Yes, sir, it's pretty much what's been going on for a number of decades. The city is involved, the city usually carries the banner, the mayor, deputy mayor. And we're going forward and really excited to do this again and get back on track.
Awesome, we are looking forward to it. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Avon Park Chamber of Commerce Christmas parade event request.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Second request, also for George, is the Christmas concert. This is Eldon Donaldson Park, again, similar to previous years.
Yes, sir, it's the annual Christmas concert. We do a conjunction with Mr. Anthony Jones from the high school, the band instructor. And there's a number of choral bands or choir groups, no bands, choir groups, although the AP high school band does play at the end as a finale. But again, we've done this on a regular basis. Unfortunately, due to circumstances, last year we couldn't hold it. But we're looking forward to doing it again. And that would be the second event request.
Very good. Is there any motion?
Make a motion that we approve the Avon Park Chamber of Commerce event request for the Christmas concert.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
George, we thank you very much, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, council.
All right, item number eight, we have the Juneteenth celebration, Mr. Arnold Wilson and Dave Cornet. Saw Dave earlier, is he gonna do the speaking or is Mr. Wilson here?
It's not my request. Dave, I'm just here for backup.
Okay.
Dave's here for backup. I put his name down, there was some confusion on this when we got this.
Okay.
We were working on trying to get stuff from Arnold. I called Dave and asked him if it was even open. And he thought it was the regular ones that usually have it over there. But when he found out it wasn't, he called me this morning, Dave. And I believe it's Arnold on. And Dave, would you like to come up and...
Tell us what you know, Dan.
Very little. We have a, we have a request, it was made six months ago for the facility. It will be a Juneteenth event where our director and staff will be assisting. So we've already got a, so we already have an event going on that day. And it is typical policy, we don't have two events going on at the same time.
Okay. Is Mr., is that Mr. Wilson there, Ellen?
Yes.
I see he is muted.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Very good, thank you. Greetings from Minneapolis, Minnesota. We're attending the one-year memorial for George Floyd. And this has been a journey. We have the opportunity to do something really, really great in our community, not just because of George Floyd, just because it's the right thing to do. We're celebrating the fact that Avon Park, Florida does not have a lot of the problems and the race issues and the police issues that other communities similar to Avon Park has. With that being said, God gave me this vision. And the vision is to stop the gun violence. And we've been on that gun violence campaign, stopping the gun violence in our community, going on five years now. And through those efforts, we had a roundtable discussion at the castle on Delaney. And from that, five years ago, birthed the Community Policing Grant. And I'm very, very proud to say that Avon Park will be celebrating a victory on Juneteenth this year. With that being said, we propose to have the Community Policing Grant participants, through that grant, we were able to see four minority road deputies on our streets. And not only on our streets, these officers oftentimes get out of their police cars and actually talk to the participants or to the residents of the South Side. And I watched Officer Kevin Tony, Officer Counsel, and Officer Leonier get down and play kickball with our kids. They have bridged several gaps between the police and the citizens. So we'd like to propose a victory march. Not too many victories in this community, but this is one that I, and I only mean several of the South Side participants or several of the South Side residents echo this. And we propose to utilize the MLK football field to host this event. Now, we have spoken with the George Floyd Community Foundation, Memorial Foundation. I was had lunch today with Mr. Ben Crump. I've had several meetings with other family members as well as the visual, the visual team that has launched several opportunities. Because without the visual of the actual incident of George Floyd, this, these types of incidents probably would continue to go on. But because of the visual, there was a conviction. And that conviction has birthed the awareness, not only for blacks and brown, but for all citizens of the United States, that this type of police brutality is unacceptable. And I'd like to echo our Sheriff Blackman and his approach to the community and what he has exemplified as a leader of our sheriff's department. So if you can see in the notes, we plan on retiring George Floyd's jersey. Of course, he was a alum, he's an alumni of South Florida State College. And being an alumni of South Florida State College, the college has proposed scholarships in his honor. Javion Floyd, a resident of Avon Park, Mr. George Floyd's son is here with us. And he'll be leaving to go to the White House tomorrow to meet the president. And this energy that I'm on, I think, and I believe Avon Park, Florida would do itself justice to show the world that we are victorious. Not saying that Avon Park Police was the greatest thing in the world, but I'm saying that the sheriff's department has provided our community a different type of policing that we want to celebrate. And with that said, the college has already put in place scholarships for our residents. And if we could grow on that, and the proposal is to have 10, 10 participants per year to receive the George Floyd Scholarship Fund. And Javion Floyd, in honor of his father, he was in Minneapolis going to truck driving school. And he took upon himself to attend South Florida State College, take the drive, truck driving course. He's completed it and he's passed. And he did that in honor of his father being in Minnesota, Minneapolis, under those same pretenses. So we have victory here. Victory that we have a council that is sensitive to the community needs. They saw fit that it was a better opportunity to bring the sheriff's department in to give us the professionalism of that type of policing. And then when there was an opportunity to go after the funding to do and put minorities on the road as road deputies, they did that. And I applaud you as the council members, as the mayor, and citizens of Avon Park. Let's do something great. Let's bring our awareness, let's bring our victory to the forefront. Let the world know that we are here. George Floyd was a citizen of Avon Park for two years. We attended his games and now we have an opportunity to do the next right thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. So, Mr. Cornet, I heard you say there was another event that day. What is the situation there?
There is another event that's been in the works for six months plus.
Okay, so the issue is, what is the other event?
It is a Juneteenth event.
Okay, so we have a Juneteenth event.
Correct.
And this is a add-on or trying to be an add-on to this?
First I heard about this was three days ago.
Okay. All right.
I've never received anything asking to use the facility. No one ever approached me about it. I just learned about it three days ago.
And the other Juneteenth event was?
Six months ago.
Six months ago?
When I was wrestling.
That was requested by a different organization?
Correct.
Okay. And it's already been approved?
Correct.
Okay. So our policy is that we...
Yep, Mayor. I apologize and no disrespect to the gentleman who just spoke. We came before you guys last year with the same event. And obviously, the booking of the football stadium for the MLK Center with the football area, some kind of way, the connectivity of that, I always thought it was city managed and city appointed. Therefore, I wasn't aware that I should have spoken with this gentleman who's the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club. I propose that we come together. We're only gonna be, we only requesting to use the stadium for a brief time, a couple hours, a couple, three to four hours tops, just for the mere fact of coming together and presenting these awards to our sheriff's department and organizing this victory march over to Lake Tulane, which is the deepest lake on the northern hemisphere. We want to let the world know that we have that lake here, so...
Appreciate it. So this Juneteenth, the original Juneteenth celebration is open to the public, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, so there's nothing stopping anyone from attending this event? Celebrating Juneteenth to its fullest extent, right?
Correct.
As far as a victory march, I didn't see any requests for road closure or anything like that. So there's no, nothing stopping anyone from marching anywhere they wish? I don't really see an issue with anyone that wants to attend, can't attend, so... I'm not sure that I see an issue with them just simply attending. I don't see the need to have two separate competing events that are basically celebrating the same thing. If any awards are to be handed out, of course, anyone can do that as they please. So anyone else have any thoughts on it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say, first of all, that the basketball tournament, the Juneteenth, is going to be inside.
Okay.
And the organization has already gotten the insurance and will present...
The original one, you said?
The original, yeah. And I don't think they're going to allow another organization tagged along under their insurance. So I don't think that will be possible. And Mr. Wilson called me about that today. I suggested that he do this event at another date or another time.
All right, is there any further questions from the council? Either Mr. Cornet or Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Cornet?
Yes, ma'am.
The events, and I do understand that we can't have them both, are they scheduled for the exact same time?
This, the second event was never scheduled. I've never seen anything on that event.
This one is not as scheduled that Mr. Wilson is...
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that's not even on the books?
No, it's not even on the books.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. So is there a need for a vote, jury?
I don't think there's motion.
Is there a motion? Hearing no motion, the issue is dead, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, thank you, Mr. Cornet. All right, next up we have the consent agenda, item number nine, minutes from May 10th, 2021.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 10th, 2021.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion, pass.
Item number 10, we have the State Highway Lighting Maintenance and Compensation Agreement Work Order. Mr. Schrader?
This is just a work order, you did a resolution, I said, last year under into a seven-year agreement with FDOT. The city maintained the lights, it was 255, it still is. It goes up 3% a year and get 95% of that.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I motion that we approve the State Highway Lighting Maintenance and Compensation Agreement Work Order for fiscal year 2122 for the total sum of $74,879.48.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion, pass.
Item number 11, we have the Kimley Horn Project Order Number One for the airport apron rehabilitation. And Yellet's got your name on it, I see we do have representatives from Kimley Horn as well.
I do, I have Jared on Zoom. This is part of our CIP, it's our next project that's coming up. This is a grant that FAA and DOT have approved to go forward on just the design phase. This is Kimley Horn's contract for that service.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff on this? Do we have a motion?
I just have one, this is, they are our engineer record, right? So what is the timeframe for this to get completed?
Jared, do you have that? Time frame?
I'm sorry, what was the question? I'm sorry, it was a little quiet on my end.
The timeframe for completion once the grants are approved?
Yeah, so typically the grants will be approved here before the end of the federal fiscal year. So we should see that sometime in August. Once that grant is received, we could get started on design right away. And then, of course, that would be done by, I'm gonna say, February or March of the year 2022 in time for the next grant cycle for FAA grants for construction.
So this still has to come to council in August for the approval of the grant?
The actual grant, yes.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
A motion we approve, pass, I'm sorry, Project Order Number One, Kimley Horn for the Apron Rehab Project.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number 12, it'll be a public hearing for the second reading of Ordinance O2 dash 2021 for food trucks.
The ordinance in City Council, Avon Park Board, provides regulation of food dispensing vehicles, lunch trucks, and other outside of building sales of food beverages, and Article Four to Chapter 26 of the Code of City Ordinances, titled Food Trucks Provided for Amendment, Section 2.03.00, general regulations for commercial industrial zoning districts, the Unified Land Development Code by adding section, subsection 2.03.04, mobile food dispensing vehicles and lunch trucks, provide for amendment of section 2.04.01 zoning district summary tables, provide for amendment of section 2.04.02 establishments of zoning districts of the Unified Land Development Code, Section 2.04.02.07, C2 General Commercial, provide for definitions and classification violations, clarifications, provide for complex, provide for several visions, provide for discrepancies errors, provide for inclusion of code, provide for liberal construction, and provide for effective date.
Okay. This is a ordinance providing rules for food trucks and the like. Uh, this is a public hearing, public hearing for Ordinance O2 dash 21 is now.
Here, Representative, support who's in the way, council here to stand to ask, answer questions.
Okay. Public hearing for Ordinance O2 dash 21 is now open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on that can do so. We do have a representative here if we have any questions for her. Don't everybody jump at once.
Saving her the time of repeating herself from the last.
Since there are no speakers, public hearing for Ordinance O2 dash 21 is now closed. Does the council have any questions for CFP?
I have one question. Sorry. I just wanna make sure that I have a clear understanding that if a food truck, if this, once this is passed and everything, the food truck is parked in the city, uh, parking space, there's a, what, what was the avenue for that? To get them out of there, other than coming to the moon?
Dana Riddell, senior planner for the record. So you are asking about if a food truck is parked in on-street parking areas?
Yes, on-street parking.
So the city code enforcement officer, like me, Randy, or someone of that nature would have to go out. And there, there's violations and penalties. And they would have to assess what class it falls under. And then they would proceed from there if they need to. If, say, it never gets moved, then they have to proceed with taking it to magistrate. And there's a process that they must follow in order to get it to move.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. That was my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question?
I have a question for Mark. Mark, how many code enforcement officers do we have working after 5:00 P.M. and on weekends?
Zero. Um, Randy comes out on some Saturdays on D.R.
I have another question, back in the first question. If there is a violation in the city, uh, city person, citizen called and say, hey, look, there's a food truck parked on this place and they're taking up three city parking spaces and it's out for hours. What's the procedure then?
Well, they can't be on city property.
I, I, I know that. So I'm asking, what's the procedure then? But what happens then? The citizen called.
Who are they gonna call?
If, if it's after hours, they may call the sheriff's office. They're not calling anybody's city.
Okay.
But is, is the sheriff gonna be enforcing our code enforcement?
No, I'm, I'm, maybe I speak to that. They might respond and see what's going on.
I think to help answer that question, I can't speak for Mark. But if necessary, if you got a call and they told you every Saturday a food truck is out and it's usually out at this time, you would say, okay, Randy, we know that because it's out there usually every Saturday around this time. Could you please go check it out on, on a weekend? So you wouldn't be like actively patrolling, but you might ask him to do something like that?
Well, if it becomes a problem, we're trying to get our second code enforcement officer right now. Somebody from in-house and we're getting his replacement. I've already talked to Randy that someone may have to come out and, and work Saturdays, at least part-time. But if we continue to get complaints on Saturdays, then once we get our second code enforcement officer in there, then we will go out and enforce this ordinance.
But to be clear, even without an ordinance, if someone parks a food truck in that same exact parking spot, the same rules apply right now today.
Correct.
And generally, just to answer another portion of the question as well is, that is something that you could speak with to the Sheriff's Department about. But generally, they don't enforce zoning codes and regulations. Sometimes they will for like, uh, parking in the right of way and things like that. But, um, just a little unquiet.
And they're supposed to have a permit. I mean, anybody seeing them, there's supposed to be some letter or something that gives them permission to be where they are because they're supposed to be on private property.
And, and I think what's been brought up before is, I mean, this is a work in progress. We gotta see how it works. It, you know, if you need to come back to you with more stringent, um, uh, violations or whatever, or what they can do, what they can't do. But we gotta start somewhere because they're already out and about.
So would you suggest you just take a picture of it and send it to staff and say this guy was parked here or this Yalz was parked over there? And, you know, it'd be up to city staff to follow up?
We, we get that now, so.
If there's any issues addressed in the ordinance law, like, like, uh, City Manager said, we'll just have to tweak them and, and, you know, this is all new to us. So we're gonna get it, like, we guys are happy.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
Um, I know that we approve ordinance number O2, 2021, food trucks as identified in B12.
Okay. Is there a second? All second. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, three, two, three to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Item number 13, interlocal agreement between the Highlands County and the city of Avon Park for removal of emergency storm debris.
Well, this doesn't require approval tonight because we're gonna be doing some additional talking. I put in the package for your review, uh, some of the things that I've already suggested. It's, you know, we, uh, we prefer to have the option of, um, they're gonna haul away as our default. And if we want to do it ourselves, then that would be a selection we would make as opposed to having to make sure we do it every May. And if we forget, then the hauls are, are, uh, basically. But we're, we're gonna have a discussion with them about several issues, uh, in the first week of June. So, uh, we'll bring back something a little bit more firm at that point.
Have you, have we discussed or have, has anyone called Sebring and like, thought that Sebring would be doing so that it's all one?
Yeah, I've been talking with, uh, Sebring's, uh, city attorney and, uh, uh, Ber Harris as well. And, uh, you know, we're pretty much of the same mind. Uh, we're gonna be meeting with the, uh, the county attorney's, uh, office and, uh, one of the commissioners, uh, on the second, actually, so.
So you're not looking for approval of this tonight?
I'm not, just, just for, uh, review.
Okay. Is there any questions on this agreement? Seeing none, moving on to the item number 14, rough draft, RFP, Burkeville Building. Mark, you have provided us with a rough draft. Want to understand, this is something similar to what Sebring has done with one of their buildings. And we are to dissect this, cut it up, and make it what we want, right?
That pretty much sums it up. I, I got it to this point. I sent it to Jerry and Jerry suggested, and I, I agree with it, to get it to you first to see what, um, you liked, didn't like, what you wanted to add, what you wanted to take out. And then, um, when we got to that point, do you look at for any, uh, to add or any, you know, any of the legal issues in it?
Okay. Council, suggestions?
I have a question for Jerry. I mean, Jerry, you reviewed it. Did you have any additional changes to it or are they already incorporated in?
My regulations, I did make some changes, but we, we, uh, you know, we said it's pretty, uh, preliminary because we really need, a lot of the information needs to come from you. And then, of course, we need to look at, do at that point. But, uh, my recollections, I did make some changes.
I, I, I didn't get them, but, but he said there was some. You know, my main thing for you is that it's on page three, the scope of opportunity. And, and I took language from, um, uh, most of it from what Sebring has put in there. But you may not like it, um, which is fine. It's just, I, I wanted to get something and get it to you on, um, which way you want this to go.
Okay. Uh, we did confirm that this is indeed, uh, 25,452 square feet.
Yes, it's approximately, because if you look at different areas, there's a few feet here or there on, um, different areas when you look at, on this building.
Okay. We've just heard a couple of different numbers through this process. I just wanna make sure that that was the official number that we are actually selling. Okay. We see that the 1.7 parking spaces, uh, would be leased from the city?
That's, that's what you said last, that you, you wanted to sell it without it. And then you would lease, lease back the amount of parking spots depending on the residential on the second floor.
Okay.
Not to go off on a tangent, but the, the dumpsters that are out there right now take up about three spaces. And they're awfully smelling. Could we move those to the empty lot across the street that we own and just have them there instead? That way, it, it actually gives you more parking in that already, um, developed parking lot. I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah.
That more, just.
As far as that, uh, I would just simply ask the businesses that are there, do they wanna, you know, do they have a problem going that extra distance?
Well, just across the street. I mean, if they're, yeah, I mean, I know.
You're not the one that has to throw the garbage away, so just.
No, no, no. But it's, I, if it encourages more parking for, for, um, patrons, I think it would be a good thing. People don't park around those garbage cans or those dumpsters because they smell so bad. So it actually is, takes more parking than just the three that they use.
Okay. Uh, as far as the terms of the lease, what would that look like for the leased, uh, parking spaces? I think it's gonna be kind of important to find out, is it gonna cost this person $10 a year or $10,000 a year? Would it be, can, can you have a lease for X number of dollars in perpetuity, Jerry?
I'm sorry, what?
So releasing 1.7 parking spaces per unit, which I believe there's 10 units, uh, so it'd be 17 parking spaces to whoever buys this building. So with that comes, you have terms of that lease.
Yeah, they'd be separate so you could have terminal lease. You know, it's just a matter of how sweet the deal is for them. Like, if you're gonna make it a five-year lease, they might think they're gonna lose those spaces in five years. You have, you have 10 years or you make a period of time.
Well.
And now you're not in the lease, obviously, you're gonna feel more comfortable with it at that point.
Well, I guess, yeah, the question would be, if they, if they buy this building and they have 10 units up there and now all of a sudden, five years from now, their parking spaces are gone, they could have those units in front, right?
Yeah. I, I, I think that that's something you're gonna have to negotiate with them.
Don't, don't you think that we should, that should be part of the advertised package?
I think that that's what you're leaning against and it should be part of the package.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I know if I was gonna be buying the building, that I would definitely wanna know what you're gonna be in for and what, is there gonna be something that's gonna hamper you having the ability to have those 10 units that you? And according to?
No, they should be subject to change because they may not want 10 units upstairs. And they only want five or six, or they even want 10 and then downgrade it to five in five years. You know, and the parking would go according to how many units they have.
Right, which it is. It's 1.7 per unit. My question is, do we want to assign a dollar figure to that and a number of years?
I wouldn't. That's just me.
Why not?
Because it's part of the deal to get it, for them to use it. And since we're not selling the, the parking, they need the parking for the tenants, I mean, for their residents.
So you could potentially hold them over a barrel in X number of years?
No. I mean, that, that's something that I think would be carried over in good faith as well, you know?
Ah, okay.
I mean, you put it in a contract that says, you know, you get as many parking spots according to how many, um, units you have upstairs. And that can fluctuate, so they'd have to be honest with us, letting us know when they have 10.
Can we establish a dollar amount per unit?
You mean unit per apartment?
No, that's already established, 1.7. I'm talking about a dollar amount per unit. We have up to 17 parking spaces. My proposal would be, the number is irrelevant. I was willing to sell the parking spaces of the building originally because whoever owns that building needs those parking spaces. So you wanna do a fluctuating, uh, scale, which is fine. But it does need to be defined as to how much per unit it's gonna cost. I would propose a dollar a year per parking space up to 17 parking spaces.
A lot of this has to do with what your sale price is too, because, you know, if the sale price is zero, you know, it just wants to renovation. And of course, you're given a value regarding the parking, parking spaces.
Right. But we also don't want someone to bid a fair market value for the building and then find out later that now all of a sudden, the council on them wants to charge, you know, $10,000 and that breaks the deal.
Can't imagine you all would do something like that.
You're saying lease them or sell them now? I didn't hear that part.
Lease.
Yeah. I'm okay with leasing it. I'm not okay with selling them.
For a dollar a year in perpetuity?
Sure.
Okay. See, does anyone disagree with that? And Jerry, is that legal?
A dollar a year lease, so.
A dollar a year per unit up to 17 units?
Yeah, you can negotiate whatever you want with these.
Okay. So if the council agrees on a dollar a year, and then can we do it in perpetuity?
Uh, well, you'd have basically, it's called an Evergreen provision. It says that, you know, last, and keep renewing every year until somebody says no. But if you, if you're talking about perpetuity, that's, that's something totally different. That's not a lease, basically.
Could, could it be up to the discretion of whoever buys the building?
I think some of it's open to negotiation. Maybe that's what you should say. It sounds to me like you haven't really decided basically yet. Uh, because it, you know, typically, the biggest, the longest lease you're ever gonna find is a 99-year lease.
Okay. Well, 99 years, that's fine.
Then that's basically what is part of the deal.
That's gonna outlive whoever.
I would, I would be here to do that.
Right.
Well, and also to where they cannot sublease, what are the rules to them?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I mean, the whole purpose is to lease them for that building.
Well, you can do the same thing with covenants of the property. But, yeah, if you want to do a lease, that's fine. I'm not talking about it. Just saying.
Okay.
If you want to do with property, we can, we can establish rules regarding the covenants by establishing covenant before it's sold. And then, uh, you know, so it has to sound big.
Well, okay, Jerry, that's what we wanna do. $1 per unit up to 17 units and/or 1.7 units per, 1.7 parking spaces per dwelling unit, uh, for 99-year term, but it has, cannot be subleased to any other property owner.
Okay.
Got it?
So somebody has recording to that.
Okay. If we can hear it. Okay. Does anyone, is anyone opposed to that?
No.
I think it makes it very simple. All right. Any other suggestion?
I, I just go through a couple of the items that I put in here that I did, I, I thought I said before, but I did. That was basically with regard to the qualifications. I have one additional one, so successful experience in renovation projects. Uh, similar to the one proposed, will be strongly considered. Before natural pictures or any renovation projects will be very helpful.
What page is that, Jerry?
That would be, uh, at the top of page five, the last item. I just added one on. And, and that's just a suggestion, uh, because I've, you know, I've seen this before. Uh, you're not basically required that they have that experience, but you're gonna take that into consideration. So somebody should be, that might give somebody motivation to, uh, provide you that to, 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 uh, really, quote on it if they had that kind of experience.
Sure.
If you go about the middle of page nine, um, it talks about, uh, minority, um, business enterprises will be afforded opportunity. Um, state has a, a certification process where it has certified minority and women, uh, business enterprises will be afforded opportunity. And will receive bid points because that, you're gonna establish a, a scoring sheet, I assume, for RFPs. It's the best way to do those. And no respondent will be discriminated against on grounds of race card and so on. Let's see what else do I have here? It's actually a pretty good form. Uh, I did have, uh, since the, when this was obviously done, they didn't have the new provisions regarding EBR5. I added that in there. There's a couple of typos inherent during the contract here, which should be responded and so on. And prohibition against contracting scrutinized companies in case it's a million-dollar deal. Jesus, sorry. And I have a sworn statement regarding scrutinized companies. That's basically it. But I thought they did a pretty good job of putting it in, uh, overall.
Okay. So one of the, uh, I guess the O2 important term would be, uh, the asking price. We had discussed putting it out at basically zero, so it is from zero to infinity, whatever someone is willing to offer. And of course, we can reject all bids. So is the council still good with that? Okay. Okay. Um, the other thing would be the term of advertisement. I didn't see that specifically spelled out in here, but the term of advertisement, I think we discussed, what, sixty days? Is that still acceptable, sixty days?
They're gonna have, yes, they're gonna come up inspected and all that, and they're gonna need time to walk through and do their due diligence, so.
And we may not get any in one of those sixty days.
All right. When you say sixty days, it's not sixty consecutive days you've been doing it, once a week or sixty days?
Right, alright, just. We're, we're advertising this for sixty days.
Give an opportunity to whoever wants to put in the bid, sixty days.
Sixty days to put in the bid, okay.
Right.
How long are you gonna advertise for?
Sixty days.
Sixty days. Well, if you advertise for thirty, but you allow them sixty days to respond, then that's.
Yeah, yeah.
That way you're following your procurement policy.
So you advertise for thirty, allow sixty, because if somebody comes in the last day, you have advertisement.
Well, they're, they're not gonna need it.
Sixty days to, to do it like everybody else.
I see.
That's what, that was my point.
Okay.
So if they have questions regarding the contract and all, I mean, they would contact Mark if there's anything, or there, are there gonna be like addenda and stuff that would be posted to a website so that, you know, other bidders might be able to look at that? Would they call you? I mean.
I think they'd call, uh, city manager.
Okay. Would there be a mandatory pre-bid meeting or anything like that?
Uh, I think.
Because I mean, I could see him getting inundated with questions.
Uh, you know, we're only gonna have, um, well, it may, it may pay to have a meeting, I don't know. What do you think, Mark?
I don't know, it wasn't in the two or three that I, I've looked at. I mean, they have to come here to the building, actually, that's one of the forms, um, actually, that's a Seabridge, they tweaked it a little for us, where they had to come see it, unlike the bid, we got in the windows and they called me up to put the bid in, I wanted to know what floor it was, and how many wins it was, but. That, I, I honestly don't really think in this case they'll need it, but again, it's not this is new to me, so.
So if we did something like this, there would also be a contract that comes with it? Once it's purchased, because they're gonna have to build within a certain timeframe?
Absolutely.
If not, I mean, if you could, would that be part of something that would need to be advertised in here?
Well, it, it'd be pivotal to, you know, do this.
Yeah, that way they'd know.
I mean, somebody, you know, wants to build, wants to do the project, and they wanna do it over a ten-year period, it's obviously not gonna, you know, get very far.
But you don't discuss two years.
But by the same token, if somebody, if somebody, if.
You possibly do say three, I mean, yeah, because I mean, in terms of finding, you know, and right now, no one can find anybody to do any work, unless they bring them from somewhere else to do it, and, you know, they're just really tough doing that. I guess that could be something that could be negotiated in a contract, but, you know, I'd like to see a deadline. If, let's, for example, you know, anyone can use an excuse, if we have a hurricane, that could raise everything for who knows how long, right?
I was just gonna say that. I mean, if, if your provisions there allow them to, you know, move it out.
So wouldn't we need to look at their financing first to ensure that they can do this?
I, I think so. While considering bond as well. I mean, uh, you know, somebody's promising to do it, and they get it half-done, and say, ah, well, we don't have no money, we're done, we're walking away from it.
That's what happened the last time.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta the money to finish it, otherwise you're gonna have a really trash building half-done. So, um, we wanna make sure that they can finish it. If they can't put up a bond, then they really probably don't have the finances to do it anyway, so.
Well, would there be a way, or is there any, um, intestinal fortitude from the city that if they did it within a certain timeframe, then we would lessen the burden of the cost of the building? You know, it's an incentive? You get this building done in two years, then we're gonna discount this much off of the, the sale price?
Absolutely. You know, and you could put penalties for not doing it.
Right.
Time, where you're not basically saying, you're reaching contract, we're taking the building over, you know, and thanks a lot for what you did with it, uh, you're basically just a penalty, you know, for daily fines.
So at what point does that get discussed? So I mean, you know, I would not want someone to come in here and just do the walkthrough steps, because you know, someone might spend a lot of money, they're gonna look for reports, termites, whatever, mold, whatever. They may wanna do their own inspection.
Absolutely.
Right, so.
I think those type of details should be in the average.
Yeah.
So that everyone knows exactly what they're dealing with.
Right. Unless you put as-is, then.
Well, essentially, in a contract, it is as-is where is.
Yeah.
But you don't have to, you can say, you know, we're gonna have a due diligence period, between which, uh, we've selected them as the best proposer, and the period of time in which they have to look into all these things too. And then the number two proposer will stand by, just in case they look at it and decide, well, we're not gonna do this. But, um, that's, that's all I envision it anyway.
And we cannot select whether it is a nonprofit or a for-profit business that ends up buying you? Or can't?
I don't see why you couldn't make it some, some nonprofits. You're gonna be giving away your, your building to somebody to make, make something out of it.
I don't think that we want nonprofits. I think we want for-profit businesses that are.
Right, right.
I was just gonna suggest that nonprofits generally are as well funded as.
Well, you never know, I mean, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a pretty big nonprofit to have kind of, wanna do this.
They don't.
Right.
They're usually scraping for every dime.
I mean, personally, I, I don't think I, I would distinguish that point. That would just be up to personal preference, because as proposed in here, there is a scoring metric, so if in your mind that, that holds weight, you're probably gonna score accordingly. And we don't have to discuss our reasons for scoring, won't we? So there is a scoring metric in here. Uh, has everybody had a chance to review it, and is there any questions on the scoring?
And you probably, and in, I put the city council's gonna be evaluation and selection, when you give them.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so as far as the terms that Jerry had brought up, uh, a penal, a penalty for not getting it done in a certain amount of time. What is that year gonna be? How much is it gonna be? I personally feel that, uh, you know, if we're potentially giving this building away for free, we're gonna wanna get this done ASAP. So in a scenario where someone came in and basically offered zero, then, you know, fifty thousand a year or something fairly steep is gonna be what you want. And that way, if someone drags their feet for ten years, well, the building got paid for one way or another, right?
So is this building gonna be eligible for CRA funds once they start up? I mean, because that, right there would lessen the cost of their repairs, if they end up getting five thousand dollars for storefront, how many storefronts does it have? Seven?
I think the total restoration's probably gonna be more like seven hundred thousand to a million dollars. I don't think five grand's gonna matter much.
No, thirty-five. Remember, it's per storefront. So, and there's what, six or seven storefronts there, so are we going to allow this building to also be, you know, be eligible to apply for CRA funds?
My opinion would be no until it's, uh, occupiable.
And I agree to that. I agree.
And then, so, just for the sake of not splitting hairs, as far as, uh, occupiable, I would probably say, you know, something like ninety percent occupiable, that way, if there's some, an elevator shaft, or there's some hallway in some part of the building, and there's an issue that they legally now can't construct, you know, we don't get hung up on some technicality, so give them a little bit of leeway, you know?
Okay.
So I would say it must be ninety percent occupiable within two years, three years.
That, to me, is the trickiest part of the whole thing, is that, you know, if we say two years and they can't do it, or whatever reason, but.
We take it back and try again?
I don't wanna take it back.
Or they pay the penalty?
Well, then, that's where Jerry said something about the bond, you know, if they have it bonded, then, you know, whether it's whatever penalty per day or per month or whatever. I mean, obviously, if the scoring system allows for everything, and they show that they have the funding for it, then she, we should not have a problem with it, but everyone that I've spoken to has told, has told me three years to get it going to where they can have it done and occupied.
I'm fine with three years. I will tell you that if they don't get their loan all at once, uh, funding moods change as the economy changes.
So. Okay. As long as there's that, that we need that, so the penalties, I guess, would be the question, what would, what would be a penalty?
I would be fine with fifty thousand dollars per year, however you wanna split that up.
Is that fair, Jerry? I mean, do we need to consult with a real estate agent or a banker, or?
I don't know, I mean, I, this, this was.
So in terms of requirements for them to show their funding, what type of paperwork do they have to show? Some kind of, um, I mean, other than, are we gonna have secret meetings again with pro formas and stuff like that from these different bidders, or is it going to be just a public record from the get-go? Because if that doesn't work out, then all that information is public, and then someone can come back later on and undercut.
Yeah, well, that, that's why there is provision, the sunshine rule exists, uh, goes, but you don't have to, except according to Joe's office. You don't have to, but.
I think it would be fair, you know, I wanna give everyone the best opportunity possible, if we could do it at first to where it is confidential.
Right, until a particular specified date.
Yeah.
At which point we open all bids and.
Right.
Make a selection. I, I'm agreeable to that.
I don't know where that goes.
No, that's fine.
It would be ninety days from advertising, right?
We'll plan for it.
Thirty days advertising, sixty days.
I thought sixty required the thirty, but, okay.
I'm glad what he said, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not the attorney.
I wanna give people time, so ninety's fine.
Okay.
You've only waited how long for this?
It's a practical thing.
Right.
I mean, somebody's gonna, they're gonna have to put some numbers together themselves to figure out whether it's even worth doing.
Okay. So we will anticipate having a meeting to select, uh, one or none, uh, ninety days from the first day that it is advertised. There will be a penalty of fifty thousand dollars per annum after.
Prorated.
After three years.
Yeah.
And that will be accrued daily, monthly?
Well, I don't know, it's gonna be prorated for the whole year, so it ends up being a daily fee.
Okay. Prorated, sounds good. Um, we are sticking with the three years completion, needs to be ninety percent occupiable within three years of closing. Any other terms?
Um, in regards, then that's to the residential upstairs, what about the businesses downstairs?
I would just encompass all of that. It's occupiable, not occupied.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And obviously, the term occupiable means that it is, uh, you know, permissible, that the county has inspected it, it's got CO, etc. Anything else?
So I have a question in regards to the whole process. Once, let's just say, someone's in there, and then they start having issues with fire code and this code, and oh, we opened up this wall, and we found all this stuff that we now have to fix. You know, those are unforeseen errors on the side of someone that didn't have a way to know what was in there, so would there be language in there that would say, you know, if you extend to three years based off of provable facts that, you know, these things were unforeseen or unknown at the time of the purchase? You know, because when you say as-is, I mean, God forbid, there's something in there that no one knows about right now.
I would say there's only so much that can go wrong with a building, and the type of people that do this. I understand it. I mean, this is not, this is not your first project, you know, if you're doing this. This is some, you're seasoned, you've got money, you've got experience.
So do we also have the ability to ensure that the building retains the best of its facade as possible, so that it's not altered to the point where it's unrecognizable from what it is now?
Jerry?
To keep the facade as intact as possible, considering that it is a historic building, I know it's been altered, and windows have been closed, and doors have been opened?
That's a negotiating point. I mean, you can work that in there. Um, and that would be part of the proposal, I think, if you wanna put that into the, into the, uh, the document, that, you know, should do that. We're trying to maintain the facade as, as much as the original. That, that, uh, should be included in your proposal.
It, it is included in that package that it's a historic building. I just don't know what, how that actually restricts someone.
So, I just don't want it to turn into a big square, make it look like a warehouse, you know? Things have been removed off of it.
So, I mean, all of our downtown rules still apply.
Yeah, but those are recommended. Minimum maintenance ordinance is just recommendations. There's nothing that tells you that you cannot change the facade of a building in making historic, and I'm a national Florida register, but it's been altered so many times that you can do anything to it at this point.
But our city ordinances don't restrict you from, let's say, putting a stainless steel facade on it, that looks like a rocket ship?
We have, what, minimum maintenance, I don't think stainless steel's in there. I mean, it has the color scheme.
There, there is some wording in here, that, that developer who will, uh, revitalize the property while preserving its historic nature.
Right.
Whether that covers it, but I'm, I'm with you there. It, it would kinda take away from the building if you changed the whole outside.
Uh, I mean, we could simply put in there an advertisement that, you know, preference will be given to those wishing to maintain historic facade of the building, right? Anything else?
So with these changes and everything, um, how long do you think it would be before you could actually be started advertising?
As soon as Jerry can get it back. Jerry, I, I'll send you my newest one, I found some things in there.
Okay.
Tweak a couple of typos.
Okay, yeah, I would say ASAP. Okay. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Obviously, we don't need a motion on this, right? Jerry? We don't need a.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, once we have it done, we'll need to vote on the, the final package, and, uh, so we can be advertised.
So at minimum, that'll be our next meeting.
Right.
Okay. Nothing else, round number fourteen. Uh, Barry.
Barry Foster, News Director for Highlands Radio Group.
Yes, sir.
When will this be advertised?
We'll have to approve it hopefully at our next meeting, and then it'll be advertised shortly thereafter.
Okay, well, I'll just tell you that I advertise for a real estate agent that says that they're selling more houses than they have listed. People are buying them off the internet. So I would recommend you don't sell yourself short. That's finding places to live is really apparently quite difficult.
Agreed.
I have a tent, so I'm, I'm good.
Can it parking lot?
Yes, sir. You in the back, you can come up to the microphone, please? Give your name and address, if you will, for the record.
Good evening, Carmelo Garcia.
Yes, sir.
P O Box ten two eleven, although I need to give my physical address.
That's fine.
Hey, it's eleven and seven in Florida. I've just been trying to make it in here about the Brickle Building. I have something for you guys, can I pass this to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
What can we do for you, Carmelo?
Alright, so I know that everything you guys said, you will see the last page, exactly everything you guys said about it, is what I wanted to do with the Brickle Building. I'm here to request it. I know you guys are still dealing with the issues and specifications of what, what's gonna happen with it, but I would like it, and I'm gonna tell you exactly what I'm gonna do, and then it won't take that long. The X has it in front of you.
So here's the deal. You can request it and put your proposal in with the rest of them.
Right, and I understand that, but there was a reason why I came here today, and it's just I'm gonna make a candle.
Okay, so we don't want you to make your proposal, because we don't want it to be public for everybody else to see?
Right, which is why I didn't put any, any proprietary information into it, so I just basically put all the basic stuff in there, and then I wanted to kind of, uh, elaborate a little bit on what you guys said, which is what I wanna do. Um, or should I just put everything in the proposal and, and make it a fifty-page proposal?
I mean.
I would.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, because anyone else can take your ideas and incorporate it into theirs, and if we have a duplicate proposal similar to yours, and it's like, okay, who's do we put in here? So I would, I would wait. I mean, we've been through this before, where someone got information, and then they, they tweaked it to fit them, and then they took it out from under someone else, so. Do you want that?
No, I don't, and I'm not, and what I do is, no, I'm glad that you guys didn't make a decision today, uh, but I do wanna, I would just wanna explain some, well, I wanna tell you guys something. I do, I'm a tough person, I like to be up front and, and just like, sometimes put my, put it in my mouth. This is a good thing. Uh, about the Brickle Building, if the, when the roller goes through, uh, the last page on there, you guys might wanna see that, because, uh, I'm prepared to take it and get it ready before two years and fully operational two years. So I will see you guys in the next meeting.
And then you want us to keep this?
Yes, one for the, uh, attorney and one for Commissioner Bernard, that's not you.
Okay.
For each.
No problem.
Thank you.
But now, as long as it's with us as public knowledge, you know?
Yeah, these are okay, I mean.
That's, there's nothing in there, trust me, there's nothing in there that.
Can you put any, what cost?
Nope.
Put any in there?
Not in there, it's just.
Very good, we appreciate it.
I appreciate the guys.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Sam, or the left door, I think. Thank you.
All right, we have, under Attorney updates, we have public hearing, first reading ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty-one annexation.
I, I guess this has been properly advertised this time?
It has.
Thank you. More than Stanex, possibly three, four point nine acres of land owned by Emmett.
More than six annex, possibly three, four point nine acres of land owned by Emmett and Arus Rose LLC. Identified county records as C dash fourteen dash thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash eight zero zero dash zero six nine zero dash zero 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 located at seven oh one East Winton Street, Avon Park. C dash fourteen dash thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash eight zero zero dash zero seven zero zero dash zero 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 located at sixty eight, six eighty-five East Winton Street, Avon Park. C dash fourteen dash thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash eight zero zero dash zero zero, dash zero seven one zero, dash zero 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 located at six thirty-three East Winton Street, Avon Park. C dash fourteen dash thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash eight zero zero dash zero seven two zero dash zero 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 located at seven twenty-seven East Winton Street, Avon Park into the city of Avon Park, Highlands, Carolina, Florida. By the findings of lawlessness, annexation, prerequisite notice and post-passage notice and providing effective date, first reading.
Okay, so this is a very somewhat large grove, just outside of town. This is a owner-initiated annexation. I only have one question on it, it is currently zoned ag, is that right? I believe it is, I think it's what the document says. With that, the future land use, has that been changed or is that for residential or what is the future land use? I understand we're not changing the zoning as it comes in, it's still gonna remain ag, but is there a future land use change?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either.
I think the owner's honor was supposed to be honored.
Okay, the only reason I ask that is I can remember from quite a long time back, we made it a policy that we didn't want to annex just raw ag land that was going to remain as ag land. You know, we wanted it to eventually be, whether it be commercial or R one A or et cetera, et cetera. So, just trying to figure out, was that just simply a council policy, is that a rule, you name it?
It's simply a question that you'd have to resolve, it's definitely, that I will wear up in the code. But you're, this is a request and so we always just take up the request, doesn't mean you have to approve it.
Right.
You know, but, uh, let's request to annex in. And it meets the requirements of the law to be annexed in, but doesn't mean you have to annex it in just because it meets the requirements.
Right. Was, was the owner online? Is the owner of the grove online?
Yes, yes, sir, this is Keith Emmett.
Yes, sir, this is Mayor Anderson, just had a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
We see that you want to annex the property, my question is, what is your future use of the property, do you think it'll remain grove as long as you own it or do you have any plans for it?
Yes, sir, what, what, I mean, I don't know if it's gonna happen right away, but the future plans would be for residential.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
A while back, and you said, we did, this council made a decision not to annex any growth on the agricultural land into the city limits. So are we gonna change that now?
Is that an ordinance or is that just a decision made by council?
I don't remember exactly.
That was my question, was it actual law or was it just, the council makeup at the time was a policy that they kind of went by, that was.
But before we decide to do that, I think we should know, this council should know, was it an ordinance or?
I, I don't think it is, but we can, we can definitely find out in between the two readings. So this is a first reading, so we'll have at least one more meeting in between time.
And maybe I'll tell you tonight.
Okay, but I don't see any reason why, why we can't move forward.
I agree.
At this moment. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, oh, did you have the?
Did you read into the record, Jerry? He did, yeah.
I did.
It's ready to be.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty one voluntary annexation Emmett and Arus Groves.
Second.
We have a motion on second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
That's member Gray.
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed three to one.
All right, I can't find anything in your code that discusses that at all. You know, it's not impossible, it's a resolution, by the resolution, you can change it from code, you don't want to change it, it's not your current disposition and you can change code with two votes.
Right. Would it be worth asking Central Board of Regional Planning for their opinion on what the best use of the property would be future?
Sure.
Steph, can we get that down?
I mean, we can't build anything that you're not, that you don't allow by zoning or change by zoning.
Of course, now. Very good.
And we don't know what their future zoning is going to be, right? Right, so it's probably gonna be either R one A or R one AA or.
Central Board will have a future land use map and they can look at, see what is, you know, scheduled or allowed in that area according to the company of the plant.
Change is our problem. Okay, Mr. Emmett, we appreciate you, coming forward with that.
You betcha, I'll wait to hear from you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, I have number sixteen, we have a regular update from the city manager.
But Dave was gonna hand you up something, I had a nice meeting with the Sheriff Blackman last Wednesday and, um, short version is he's agreed to take two years to get all these positions on, he's agreed to put on instead of the eight, ask for the eight this year. The four, it'd be two deputy sheriffs and two sergeants and then that'd be in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then in the following fiscal year, add, add the others and the, Rob Reed, his CPA, had worked up some numbers that, um, that he, they sent to me on Friday and actually called Rob and spoke to him with the sheriff's blessing this afternoon. Just to clarify some things that I wasn't sure about, but it, it was right, but as you see in, on the columns, the third one over the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. For two million one hundred sixty-eight thousand and eighty-eight dollars, that's gonna be seven hundred and forty thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars more than the city, you're paying now for the sheriff's office service. And that, that would be two deputy sheriffs and, and two sergeants for this coming fiscal year along with the vehicles and operating expenses. And I called down today and asked them exactly what are the operating expenses and they're, they're all their non-capitals, for example, any insurance, office supplies, fuel for the vehicles, uniforms, equipment, education, training. Everything that they have to, to purchase or pay for, for their sworn deputies. So that is what we talked about, we didn't go on any further about any of the contract or whatever, because I know this is the biggest thing as far as funding the sheriff's ops in, in, in the next fiscal year.
Is it possible as part of our negotiation that, since the price is going up so substantially, that we can get some kind of a firm commitment from the sheriff with regard to some of the code compliance issues we have? I mean, noise, noise we talked about and, you know, we really, I mean, that's something that does usually come up during the day. But, you know, it was a big deal at night when nobody's, you know, code enforcement officers are not here. And we did, we did change our code with regard to noise, so it coincides with the county, which they already enforce. And there could be things like, you know, on-street parking and, you know, a right-of-way parking type issues that, you know, can go a long ways to cure some of our problems that we have because we don't have a police department separate and apart from the sheriff's department.
Well, I know that the noise complaints they're responding to now after hours, as far as the others, we could look at that too, Jerry.
Thank you.
Noise in vehicles?
Noise in vehicle?
Yeah, no, it's someone driving down the street with a loud radio.
Yeah, that's a, unless it's changed entirely, that's actually in state statutes.
All right, is there any further questions on that point? I don't see any, do you have any good news?
You know, I mean, I'd be honest with you, as I always am, is that they need more people out here handling these calls and, and I think to do it in this phase is, is good on the sheriff for, you know, allowing that. He, he knows that to take on the full burden of all of them and plus, he's gonna have to hire people, he told me the other day and Jerry could correct it, but he's, they're down eight deputy sheriffs now, which.
We should be able to recruit from all over the country.
Yeah, everybody is though, actually, so, yeah.
So he's aware that we likely will have to raise taxes and he's aware that we're likely to have to raise fire assessment and all these other things, right? So we have two years to work on this so that we can finally get enough or sufficient money?
Well, we have fiscal year twenty twenty-one to come up with seven hundred and forty thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars, they're approximately more than we're paying now.
Okay, any further questions on? What else do you have, sir?
Lake Tulane Playground and Beach had come up last week and, or the last meeting, seems like last week. And I went down there the morning after and actually called Rick Whalen to come down and I went and looked at, actually I got the Mr. Washington Norris come down and opened up the bathrooms, it hadn't been opened up. He had been told, I guess, not to open them up during the timeframe when we didn't know whether the city was gonna get in it or it was gonna remain at the housing authority. And we went in, they weren't that bad, they just needed some cleaning, actually, it's all stainless steel in there, so the, the doors are, are rusted on the bottom, so we're working on getting those done. I walked up with Rick Whalen and there were some things that I want to see done, he want to see done, get some pressure washing done, we're working on the beach, they're still doing it, it was looking pretty good when I was there, but they're gonna try to make it a bigger beach and I think they're working on it this week. The two items that came up about, that the city bought, the playground equipment, Danielle actually got with me and showed me the two things that we bought and those two things are down there, we bought the two items. The swing set is in excellent, excellent shape, actually, it's better, it's the same one that's out, I was out during Martin the other day and something else stopped there. And it's the same one, it's actually in better shape, at Lake Tulane, but the, the chain is a little rusted, not bad, but I asked him to replace the chains on it so they, they wouldn't be rusted. There's some graffiti they're gonna paint over and, and they've got it all picked up, mowed and trimmed. And there's more trash coming in there, some of it's, I'm gonna get with Penny, I guess, whoever she contracts just mows over trash and then it gets blown in there and there's maybe some residents there dropping some trash and they pulled out. I think I had that David said, after they got it cleaned up, they had pulled out, David Roberts. They pulled out four more shopping carts out of the water, but we trimmed the trees around the, the restrooms, we have mulch in the swing area, it has been refurbished. We've borders around the mulch in two areas, has been on order for over a month, waiting for that to come in, weeds around the lake has been bush hogged and close to the water's edge. Weeds in extended beach area in the water will be pulled and disposed of this week. So they, they, they put several people down there and they got a lot of work done and there's few things left to do on it, but I think they've, I haven't gone down since they've got this done, but what they tell me is looking a lot better, so.
Okay, anything else in the city manager's report?
Just one more, I'll let Rick cover, but our hazmat, where we're at on the cleanup out the airport, Rick?
All right, short update, work began last week and work will be completed by the end of next week.
Awesome.
We're looking good and will come in under the estimate.
Very good. Any other questions on that? Seeing none. Last but not least, crowd favorite, we have counsel consideration of Florida Airport Management's unsolicited proposal. We have, we have Mr. Lowell with us.
He's been always on Zoom.
Okay, how do, how do we want to kick this off?
Just a quick report, one proposal was received, is, and already received, so we reviewed it in detail. And all of you have copies of that at this point, you have the opportunity to review. In addition, information was provided, which we went through and reviewed as well and have provided to you for your review. So, at this point, in addition, one of our items, we did reach out to our DOT and FAA and ask them for their input. And they both advised they would like to see the lease and review it and sign off on it before council.
Or are you saying that if there is a lease, that you would want it fully approved by the council before you send it to them?
You know, sir, they would want.
Fully agree, agreed upon the terms is what I'm saying, something that we would approve if they approve. Did they indicate how long that process would take?
I suspect DOT will review it fairly timely. FAA, they have any idea on your end, I know they may be a little bit longer.
I, I think we're gonna want it to have an interactive process with them, but it can take some time to, to get through the internal approval process, but I, as you know, the FAA did reach out to the city. Because they had, they had gotten wind of this unsolicited proposal, so I, I know they're aware of it and they're very interested in participating in the review process.
It's no longer unsolicited now that we've gone through the advertising period, so now it is an actual solicited, isn't it?
It's a proposal and, so from procedural standpoint, one, the proposal that they've, they've raised is exempt from sunshine and public records. Until such a time as you make a final decision that you will go forward, you may decide after going over the proposal and aspects of it that, you know, are, are open. That you want to reject all bids or reject the bid that's remaining and rebid or just reject all bids and do something else. Those are possibilities, once you make the selection, though, to, to, if you do decide to go with FAM, it's not exempt anymore from anything. Now, according to my discussion with Attorney General's office, the exempt means that it's, just that, it's exempt, it doesn't mean that it's protected. Okay, from their perspective, it's, you can have an open meeting, but, or you can have a closed meeting until such a time as you make the selection.
And the purpose of a closed meeting would be to discuss amongst council, not including FAM?
With FAM or without FAM, in your ways, depending on what you want to achieve. The, if you were asking for my recommendation, I think that you guys need to work out the details as to what you want to see in this and then have our negotiators or discuss, people are working on this, you know, take what you want. To them, talk to them about it and, and bring something back to you. Obviously, we're not making recommendations to you, we're just basically bringing backs back and forth, makes it easier than having twenty meetings between now and next month. So, if you decide that you want to open the meeting, then I would, I would just, just in, as a matter of abundance of caution, ask FAM to state on the record, you know, if they're okay with us having the meeting open. You want it closed and it appear that you can do so with or without your permission.
I mean, would it be inappropriate to ask them what they prefer?
I don't know, it's really something that you should rely on, I did talk to them, they said that they didn't have any trade secrets associated with this proposal, that's not something that is earth shaking and so. But I, I'd ask them if they can come up and if they want to, you know, make a statement before you make a decision, that'd be fine.
Fifty? Just give your name, affiliation, what?
Hello, the rounds, men and women, thank you for having us here today, Jonathan Clark, four one five East Pine Street, Atlanta, Florida, three two eight one.
Yes, sir.
We're fine, you know, we prefer closed so we could speak freely and then we can step outside if y'all need to, you know, comfortably speak amongst yourselves, but we'd love to know how y'all want to proceed. But we'd love to know how y'all want to proceed because we're excited to do something special.
Well, the only reason I did, I was proposing not to have them do the closed session tonight and do it that is because you're missing members and was not able to make it. But you can get a lot accomplished, you know, by discussing what you, you know, as a, as a body, what you all feel is reasonable, what you're willing to live with. Because some of those aspects of what you're not willing to live with might be things that they can't live with either. In which case, you know, you reject the bid and you decide to go back to the RFP and try again. In which case their, their information can remain exempt if they wish it to for up to a hundred eighty days. But if you rebid, then it goes through the same process again if their, if their proposal is part of that new group, so.
So the people that would be present would be, if it's with them, I personally would prefer that the council do it alone with our legal advisors and with our accountant and with city staff so that we can see what it is that we can all come to conclusions with, have that drafted and hand it to them. And if they feel at that point that they want to come back and make it a group thing, then that's fine. But I just think that the first meeting should be just amongst ourselves.
Okay.
That's just me. I don't want to go paddling back and forth, you know, either all night long, you know?
Sure. Aaron, do you want to vote tonight?
Sure.
In which case I'll, you know, ask that you vote on that.
But then Jen's not here.
Well, I don't, I don't think that everything would be decided tonight anyways, because as Lowell had said, even if we
He's here.
Reach a consensus, it still has to go to F A and D O T before it's actually approved anyway.
Right.
Lowell, what's your recommendation with FAM or without a first meeting?
I think there are policy items that you as a council need to discuss. And that are really related to F A and F A requirements. Those are elements that you have some latitude as a policy to decide and there may be other things that you want to ask the FAM as well that we're probably inviting to them.
Okay.
And let them respond to it. And you want to have them come back and answer questions tonight, that's right.
Sure.
If you read the proposal, you may have questions. Is you gonna have them answer for you tonight so we could really debate?
One question that was raised today that I wasn't sure of the answer, the cone of silence is now closed with regard to the twenty-one days that being done, right? The cone of silence is done?
That's right.
Okay. I would not be opposed to having a quick meeting amongst council to see what we can come up with. And then if we have questions for FAM at that point, then we can go back, we can invite them into the closed meeting and continue. Anyone opposed to that? Want a council here? Okay. Do we have a motion for that?
To do it verbatim, I make a motion to concur with what the mayor just suggested.
I should have added more.
Repeat it, please.
We are going to have a closed session meeting right now so that the council can discuss with our staff and our consultants amongst ourselves. And then we may, if we have questions, invite FAM to join that meeting before the closed session is over.
I'll second that. I made the motion, so if anyone wants to second.
Is there a second to that? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any questions as to what we're doing? All right, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. So JT, we will now have a closed session meeting without you guys present to start out with. And then after we discuss it, if we have questions, then we'll invite you guys back in.
You can stand by in the hallway.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
So we'll have some Zoom.
Outside the building, not in the hallway.